Let me start by welcoming everyone. Thank you for coming to this special meeting to discuss a subject near and dear to all of our hearts. The Sepulveda Basin and the Wildlife Reserve and you know, we're all concerned and curious about plans for the reserve and and we're here tonight to learn more about it. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Joanne.
Thank you, Kathy. Hi, everyone. Tonight, we are going to be having two guests who will tell us more about the Sepulveda Vision Plan, which is in the process of being, you know, the plan is in the process of being planned. And we've been going to meetings where we can give feedback and learn more about it. So we thought that some of you might not have access to the meetings and you would like to hear more about it from two of the people who are involved in the vision plan. And one is Jessica Henson and the other one is Richard Lewis III. And they're involved with the design of the design of the whole Sepulveda Basin, not only the Wildlife Refuge, but you know, with the with sports centers, that kind of thing. But of course, we're more interested in the Wildlife Refuge and I think they're gonna hopefully focus a little bit about that tonight. And with that, I would like to turn the meeting over to them. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Can you guys see a screen that says Sepulveda Basin?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, shared the wrong one at first. Well, thank you all so much for inviting us tonight. It's been a real pleasure to get to know some of you over the last several months. And we're really happy to be here to present to the full group because we know not everybody can make it to some of the special workshops and stuff. So thank you again for your time tonight. And if you can see the screen right now, you know that the Sepulveda Vision Plan is something that we're working very hard on. We're very excited about the potential there. And a lot of the energy that came around to help this vision plan become a reality is to really rethink the basin using natural systems thinking. So we're looking a lot at ecology, the health of plants and wildlife out there. We're talking a lot about biodiversity in the floodplain and how it relates to the river. Talking a lot about stormwater. We are, as was mentioned, looking at some of the recreation systems as well as the cultural systems and how this really functions for the valley. So we're happy to be here tonight. We've sort of split this presentation into two parts. The first part, which I'll try to move pretty quickly through is a general update because we recognize that everyone that is on this call maybe hasn't seen the overall vision plan. And then Richard Lewis, who's the restoration ecologist on the team, is going to talk in more detail about sort of restoration strategies and different project precedents and some ideas as they relate to potentially the Wildlife Reserve. So this is sort of a special, a special opportunity for us as well to talk to a group that's particularly interested in that aspect of the basin. So if you haven't been following the vision plan process, I want to just start by saying this is led by the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering in partnership with the Department of Recreation and Parks and the State of California Santa Monica Mountains Conservation Authority and the Mountains and Recreation Conservation Authority. So there's city and state collaboration that had led to the funding and as part of the core team on this. And really just wanting to think through the basin. I'll talk a little bit more in a second about some of those goals. Tonight, we'll, we'll go through some of the site and context and overall objectives that have emerged from the community process. We'll talk briefly about some of the things we've heard from the community. We'll show you what we showed the community briefly in June with some different concept alternatives. And then we're going to try to spend most of our time really talking about some of the restoration and strategies for different parts of the basin and of course, looking forward to saving some time for discussion. I think most people on this call are probably quite familiar with the location of the Sepulveda Basin, but for anyone that's not, 2,000 acres on the southern edge of the San Fernando Valley, one of the largest park spaces in the city of Los Angeles. Really a beloved space by many for both recreation as well as habitat and open space features. About half the size of Griffith Park, but since the Sepulveda Basin is so much flatter, the number of active areas is really quite significant at Sepulveda Basin. When you compare it to something like Central Park in New York City, there's really no comparison. It's significantly larger, at two times, two and a half times larger. So this is a really large open space. As we've been working on this project, we started sort of late last year and early this year in an information gathering. The project is across four stages and we're just starting to get into the draft plan stage right now, stage three. We've had some really great meetings with some of the officers of the Audubon Society. We've had some good sidewalks. Pat, Muriel, Glenn, others have been really participatory in this process. We appreciate all of you through this. But we've had some workshops and like I said, we're getting ready this fall and around October to get toward a draft plan and we're trying to build toward a community consensus. So the plan does not exist yet, which is why it's a great time for this meeting tonight. We're still in the ideas phases and really bringing things together. The goal is for the city of Los Angeles to initiate environmental impact reports, starting at the end of this year. And for the, which is the process that will take about 18 months likely, maybe 12 to 24 months. And then the actual plan itself is scheduled to be complete in the spring. I'll talk a little bit more at the end about what's upcoming this fall for anybody that might be interested in participating more. Over the last eight months, we've been asking community members about objectives for the project. We've been bringing forward past planning efforts that have been done. There was a really great feasibility study that was done around the river last year specifically. There have been some other studies around recreation areas. So the goal is to bring all of that together in a comprehensive vision plan. We've heard a high priority on climate resilience, ecosystem function and nature-based strategies, creating natural functioning of the LA River and tributaries, improving the interface between some of the ecology and recreation and culture and art areas, improving water quality of streams and outlets, improving multimodal transportation access, enhancing recreation, educational, cultural and art programming, maintaining or increasing the flood risk reduction. And we're talking a lot about governance and long-term operations and maintenance. We've heard time and time again from the community that the level of of maintenance at the basin right now is pretty unacceptable. And if that can't be addressed, then other projects are not not really necessarily a good thing because we need to be able to maintain what's out there. Well, we had a pleasure of really engaging pretty deeply with the community, of course, in some traditional workshops and community public meetings. But also in some unique ways out in the basin, those are some of the more fun days. Through some pop-ups, we did some classroom education at Birmingham High School and some of the elementary schools around the valley. We've done a lot of individual stakeholder meetings. We've done a lot of agency coordination. Many of you probably know that the US Army Corps of Engineers, the federal government owns the basin. And so we've been coordinating very closely with them throughout this process. We've had a couple of different surveys throughout this. Many of you might have participated in the first round survey. We have a second round survey out right now. We've had over 1,200 people participate already in that second round, round survey, which is really great. We're trying to get broad representation from communities all around the basin, not just a single community. And so a lot of our boots-on-the-ground effort is going into especially reaching out to communities that may not have as much digital access or may not have as much time to join certain in-person like meetings during the day. We've heard a lot of people really like, you know, the Wildlife Reserve. That's a great thing that we're talking about tonight. A lot of love for some of the sports and recreation activities, some of the different parks, the Community Gardens and Tapia Brothers, Balboa Lake consistently shows up very highly on some of the scores, the Dog Park. So there are a lot of things that people already love. Some of you have seen this slide many a times at this point. These are some summaries of some of the early things we heard from folks about a desire for programming or better access. We've heard a desire for just better basic amenities, whether that's cleaner restrooms or safer lighting schemes and way better signage. A big priority on native ecology and habitats and a strong desire to broaden the representation of indigenous groups in the basin and through, through spaces and programming as well. The process started with a really deep data analysis, everything from demographics and recreation to ecology, habitat. We're not going to go into that tonight, but there are some other materials on the website for those of you that might be interested to dig deeper into some of the mapping that was completed, looking at different categories. To summarize some of the key findings through that process, we've heard a lot about limited access. Some communities don't have as many ways to get into the basin. There's a really strong bifurcation between the north and the south of the basin of, of different community demographics. I mentioned before, a very strong need for O and M, better operations and maintenance. We've been looking a lot at environmental burden, how that relates to climate issues and also how that relates to funding streams related to finding. There's a really high environmental burden, particularly along the north of the basin. A lot of that is due to legacy pollution and contamination and air pollution from the 405. And we've heard a lot of concerns and this group has actually shared really helpfully with us about fractured habitat and abrupt transitions between different usage zones, rigid infrastructure. We've talked about the, the capacity of the flood basin is appreciated. But with climate instability and future projections, that might be even a little smaller than we'd like to have. We, there's a lot of areas of just lawn that aren't providing a lot of benefit to wildlife and can we increase the native habitat, native species? And Richard's going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Only about 25% of the basin is actually preserved for habitat area. And some of that also is sort of dual use. So we'd like to see that number increase. And some of the transportation around the basin does a great job of connecting. And then there are also some transportation pieces that that cause divides. And so how do we bridge that? Back in June, we showed a few different concept alternatives and these were not completed designs, but rather ways for people to start to consider what their priorities might be for the basin and have a conversation. We heard from a lot of people, they love the stillness out of the heart of the basin. You know, please don't change the fact that when you're at the Wildlife Reserve or you're along the river, it doesn't feel like you're in the city of LA. And this is a really beautiful thing we've heard and want to maintain. And perhaps activity can be along the edges of the basin to help with that porosity at the edges, keeping that stillness at the heart. We've heard a lot of passion and desire about the river to be freed from the channelization, removing concrete and structures that sort of hinder the flow. And through this process, what we're working to do is increase the flood capacity of the basin. So by giving the river more room, giving the tributaries more room, actually increasing areas for habitat, but also increasing area for some of those high flows when we have, oh, say, I don't know, a tropical depression like we did this past week, which I hope nobody experienced any terrible damages from. But how does, how's our basin perform at those moments? We've heard a lot about this, and I mentioned before, breaking down the barriers. Sometimes that could be as simple as making the, the condition of moving under an underpass more pleasant and more safe. And other times it might be to actually create, to create new entries or gateways. And, and finally, many of you probably know this, but because the Department of Recreation and Parks started leasing different sections of the basin from the federal government in the 1950s, the basin was somewhat, the, the programming was developed in kind of parcel-by-parcel pieces, which is why at the basin today, it's actually very difficult. As Pat has pointed out to me many times, you know, there's, there's not an address system. There's not a very clear understanding of how different sections of the basin relate to each other, where people are in the basin, because each of these things were sort of separate parcels. And so what this vision plan is working toward is how do we think comprehensively about these different areas? And one aspect of that is to think about the circulation, the signage, the, the safety that's associated with that. How do law enforcement officials find people when they're at the basin, for example? So could we have a system of, of trails and nested loop for bikes, for pedestrians that would allow people to move through the basin? In June, we presented three different alternatives to the community along a spectrum. Each of these was based on the river and the tributaries sort of driving the design that hydrology would drive sort of the needed spaces, if you will, for additional expansion of the river and of the habitat areas. And so on the far left here, we had a scheme called the Wildlands. In the center, a scheme called the Terraced Floodplain. And on the right, we have a scheme called the River Valley. These are the three schemes that currently members of the public can comment on through the system of the, the current survey that's out there. You can read a lot more about each of them and look at them in detail on the website. But a kind of simple way to look at them is the Wildlands had the broadest rivers and tributary systems. The Terraced Floodplain still kept the river pretty wide, but had terraced like lobes that would step up to the higher elevations in the basin. And the River Valley was most similar to what's out there. And instead of widening the river as much, created these sort of moments along the river for expansion and enhanced habitat. So this is an example of what one of those alternatives looked like, which was the Wildlands. You'll notice in all of these, the Wildlife Reserve area is kept completely intact. And in fact, even expanded more robustly into what you all know as the West Reserve to the side here. So you'll see that in all alternatives, a lot of care and love, and Richard will talk more about this in a second. But in making sure that we only enhance, but don't damage anything that's already working over here at the Wildlife Reserve Lake. In other areas of the basin, we're looking at how golf and ecology interact. Can we reduce the amount of lawn acreage? Can we help improve how much water we're using here? We're looking at along this north edge, helping to break down the scale of the park and connect it to a lot of communities in the north, which have historically been somewhat underserved in terms of some of their access to park amenities. And you see along the basin, Tapia Brothers stays, the Community Gardens stays. We've, we have some additional sports soccer fields to the east of Jelte here. The back 40, as it's often called here, is kept as passive recreation with, with infiltration gardens and wildlife areas. Keeping the Dog Park and Belaflorest and Parks is actually already working on this, but revitalizing the baseball diamonds here on the far west. Tapia Brothers is currently looking at potentially using some of this area for an urban organic farm, which could be really cool. And we're looking at how we can really enhance, as you can see, these areas along the river. We have two new pedestrian bridges, showing one here at Balboa, one across the center of the basin. So the ability to walk along the river and then cross the river is there. Russia's showing a new bridge at Burbank. Many of you might know that that bridge, as it exists today, is really a a tight point along the LA River that constricts flows in large events, which prohibits the widening of the river as it exists today. So a new bridge here with wildlife overlooks and the ability to widen the flow of the river. So I won't go into detail on each of these because a lot of the, the core circulation and transportation and programming elements are the same. But you can certainly go online and make your voice heard about which thing is most appealing to you if you haven't yet. The Terraced Floodplain had a lot of similarities along the river. It had, as you can see, maintained the, the flight field that is here. And it sort of reimagined a little bit of the golfing along the edges of the river. And then the River Valley one, which as I mentioned, was the most similar to what's out there today, had the most narrow sort of interpretation of expansion of some of the wildlife areas in the river. I'm happy to say that as it stands right now in the survey, the community preferred alternative is, as it stands, the, the Wildland Survey with a couple of modifications potentially to some of the recreation. But really a strong passion emerging for a big investment in the wildlife areas and in the ecology and habitat of the basin and the widening of the LA River. You can see here a section of what we've been going for along the river with a widened system here. I'll mention this a little bit more on another screen, but these are not hardened or concrete. The idea is that the river is allowed to move freely around this, this floodplain here and allowed to, you know, create sandbars in the river. And as I'm sure Richard will mention in a minute, creating different hydrologies for different types of habitat to thrive and therefore different species that need that range. We presented in June a schedule showing how these different projects around the basin could be implemented. We showed three different phases. So phase one were things that should happen now and are in line with the US Army Corps of Engineers Master Plan, which means they don't have to go through a federal feasibility or master plan update. Phase two were things that might take a little bit longer and phase three are the things that would take the longest. Given what we had heard from this group, we wanted to highlight a few things. Specifically, the Wildlife Reserve and South Reserve enhancements, which as you can see are the number one listed project currently. And then what we're calling River Invasive and Trash Removal, which is, is sort of a, a pre-project to river de-channelization, just to get a lot of the trash that's out of the basin currently, maybe for some just improving that O and M. We also have heard some updates just about wayfinding that may be interesting to this group. And we also think there's a lot of interest in the Haskell Creek and the river de-channelization. So I'll just mention a few of those. And then like I said, Richard's going to talk more about the, the habitat features. So the way that we're starting to put together the plan, and this is very raw right now because we're headed towards an October draft for the public. So you guys are sort of starting to get a sneak preview here is to highlight how these projects might come into fruition. So like I said, the very first project that is called out currently in the vision plan is for enhancements to the Wildlife Reserve area in the West Reserve. I think there's still a question in our mind, how much of the South Reserve gets included in that? So I, I hope that you'll, you know, help give some feedback on, on that. But really, I'll just read this project description for folks. This project will focus on enhancing and improving habitats and amenities throughout the Wildlife Reserve. This includes overlooks, signage, trails and other amenities renovated to improve access, wayfinding and sense of place. And Richard's going to talk more about new, but I want to be super clear that the intent here is not to disturb the elements that are working around the core area of the Wildlife Reserve, but really to enhance specifically the West Reserve where we have a lot of invasive mustard today. But new upland, lowland and transistional habitat areas be created to allow for diverse hydrological and ecological conditions. We're trying to suggest that that materiality, materiality remain primarily of natural materials like today with the stone fines paths and timber edging, you know, the wooden site furnitures and other thing that is already out there and just enhancing or keeping and completing sort of these areas here. The goal here, of course, is to maintain entirely the sensitive habitats and native species that already exist. A lot of work has gone in here through decades of leadership by yourselves, as well as other groups like the Native Plant Society to really make that happen. So that's called out as the very first recommended plan in the vision plan. The second piece that's really recommended here, this is very heavily operations and maintenance focused. This is really getting rid of trash and just stuff that has built up for way too long in the basin. Doing this in a very ecologically sensitive way. But, but this would be not in relationship to the large de-channelization, but it's really just how do we get back to a neutral point where we don't have a ton of trash? I know many of you on this call participate in like yearly or spring cleanups that like Full Hour Heal the Bay have had in the basin. That's really appreciated. The volunteer work is great, but we think the basin could use some additional and regular trash cleanup as an early implementation here. A couple more things that are recommended in the first phase of this project would be the general wayfinding upgrades. I'll talk more about those in a few minutes. But really coordinating throughout the basin to improve signage. That includes better information about locational awareness through either addresses or mile markers to help emergency emergency personnel find people in the basin as well as to help people know where they are. So we've been working, we actually had a call just a couple of days ago with the Los Angeles Fire Department, talking about how they locate fires in the basin currently and what are some things that could improve that, either through addresses, mile markers, et cetera. We've been talking a lot also actually with the Audubon team because you guys have a signage project going already, which is great and includes a lot of best practices that we'd want to see expanded in other areas of the basin as well. We've been talking a lot about microtransit in the basin. So some of you might have been to Griffith Park, where you can now ride a free shuttle around Griffith Park so you can park and ride. That's a feature that a lot of people like. It reduces a lot of pressure on parking areas and keeps a lot of that traffic from the heart of the basin. And we think that Sepulveda Basin could also benefit from clean energy hybrid or, or totally electric shuttles that could, could move people around the basin in an early phase of this project. Basically today, as you all know, if you're at the Wildlife Reserve and you want to go somewhere else, a lot of people just get back in their car. You know, they drive out to Victory across, back down Balboa and then back into the basin. And so how do we start to think about movement in the basin, especially for communities that maybe need to take the bus rapid transit to the basin and don't have a car? So there's an equity piece that we're really interested in there. And then the last two I really wanted to highlight tonight, and then I'll turn it over to Richard here in a minute, is one that we're calling the Haskell Creek Project and the, the Large LA River De-Channelization and Trail Network. These projects are obviously very significant. They require a lot of permit work and coordination with the US Army Corps of Engineers, but potentially very exciting. So there are some sections of Haskell Creek, especially south. If you just west of the Wildlife Reserve into the south, that there's some good stuff happening. There's also some invasives and some other things that could use enhancement. So the goal here is to, to widen that cross-section of Haskell Creek, particularly the area north of the Wildlife Reserve, to be able to allow for a greater variety of wet and dry conditions and an enhanced riparian corridor along that. And then for the river de-channelization, which you might say is sort of the heart of the overall vision plan. This is a very large project, probably 250 to 300 acres of river widening that we're looking at here with a significant renaturalization of the banks, removal of concrete, allowing the river to meander and bifurcate and create sandbars and sediment, natural sediment processes here. That project also includes the LA River Trail and the two pedestrian bridges and the the Burbank Bridge. So you can imagine that's a very large project that will take many years to unfold, but very excited about that potential for that. So that's in phase 1.2 because these projects take a little bit more time to permit and get moving. But they're still in phase one because they're very important to the vision plan. Just wanted to give a couple of examples here of the types of projects our office has done. This is Mill River. This was a completely channelized storm channel here. You can see on the left, on the right, what we've achieved today is a fully restored Mill River. And in fact, actually has a higher storm capacity than the image on the left had. And so while handling some of the hydraulics and hydrology of this, we've actually made a much more pleasant place for people to be. And of course, this is what we're hoping to do, say, along the LA River De-Channelization Project. This is another really interesting project. This is not a project that our office did. It's a project by George DePome. It's in Switzerland. But I wanted to draw attention to it because it's something that's very important to know about the LA River. Is as different sections of it are restored, we're really talking about process-based restoration. So we're not telling the river where to go, but we're really, we're giving it an initial sort of space and then letting it form its own channels and grooves. And so this is just a really good image of seeing how a river starts to meander, how it starts to anastomose, how it starts to create its own space. And that, that process restoration along Big River Project will be really important. But tonight, we wanted to really talk a lot about the Wildlife Reserve. So I'm going to turn it over to Richard to talk about this very nuanced approach, how something like the Wildlife Reserve, which is already very successful, is, could be approached. Richard?
Thanks, Jessica. I just want to say again, we enjoy getting to know you folks and talk with you and even tour the reserve with some of you. So we really do appreciate you as the Brain Trust and the stewards. Uh, you as the brain trust and the stewards of these resources, and it's evident the level of. Active and washful care that you've been providing. What we wanted to present tonight is just a few. Restoration uh examples from Southern California. I want to stress, these are all. Uh, municipal client projects. Um, and to give you an idea what's possible through a sort of public. Procurement process for these sorts of projects. Uh, first here is the Oraseco. That Solus has been working on for the city of Pasadena. In the vicinity of Van de Kamp Bridge, it's partly a grant-funded effort. And the initial conditions, partly from a lot of the construction. Uh, work on the retrofitting project for the bridge. As you see on the left, there was a lot of bare ground, a lot of weedy invasive plants, compacted soil. So we were able to come in and design a plan that decompacted the soils, suppressed the weeds. And through the planting and seeding of a wide diversity of native perennial shrubs and grasses. We were able to create a trailside experience for the public that's very natural. Includes some aesthetic upgrades. And this section of trail is very heavily used. Thousands of people pass through here on a regular basis. And we've been happy to get some positive back. Next slide, please. This project in Temecula Creek represents a little bit more heavy lifting. This is a large floodplain area of over six acres. For the city of Temecula, where the initial conditions on the left are somewhat similar to what you see on parts of the reserve extending outward. Beyond Haskell Creek, beyond the pond, both east and west, there are some fairly broad fields of invasive herbs. So our first step was to remove them, as you see in the center image. And restore that habitat area that already had a sparse scatter of native willows and native shrubs. But we've really upgraded the habitat by bringing in that valuable understory. And mid-story habitat with some good botanical diversity. And it happened pretty quickly. This photo shows twenty nineteen. But even by twenty fourteen, we started to see a number of. Uh, native herbs and shrubs beginning to arise on that site. And by the time we were done, this habitat area had several pair of Lisvell's Vireo. Uh, that nested successfully and produced yarn, as well as yellow breasted chat. And multiple other special status species. This project was signed off. Uh, on a timely basis by the Natural Resource Agencies, partly based on the success of the Vireo. Next slide, please. This is an interesting project we did for O C Public Works. Who required some offsite mitigation for a flood control project in San Diego Creek. In Peters Canyon Park, we identified about a mile reach of the creek. That was badly degraded ecologically by hundreds and hundreds of exotic trees, such as these. Um, gum trees that most of you probably know are native to Australia. Although these did provide some habitat value for wildlife, such as birds of prey. Overall, they did not offer the value of native riparian scrub. For the wide range of species. And that's what you see on your right. This is the same area, the same image. Several years later, where we've replaced this exotic forest with really nothing but a weedy understory. To this rich, diverse um habitat. That similar to Temecula Creek has also been successfully nested in for multiple years by Lisvell's Vireo. And also recently received approval from the federal and state agencies. Next slide. What Olin has been working on, with a little botanical input from Solus. Are these nice axonometric diagrams that give an idea. Of the kinds of habitats that Solus thought could exist within. A restored L A River scenario, not everywhere, but in select locations. You'll see an example in the next slide. A sycamore riparian forest. To give you an idea of the appearance, the structure of not only some of the trees. But also a nice diverse understory that would support a range of wildlife species. When we're looking at these different habitat. Typologies or vegetation communities, the questions we're asking about what can be where. Will include an assessment of the soil types, the hydrology, of the soil moisture. As well as the hydraulics or stream processes that would shape some of the conditions for plants. Also significantly, uh, in the Sepulveda Basin. Um, some of these areas are inundated for periods of time. And so which kinds of plants can withstand. Indication of whatever duration. And then we're also looking at connectivity. What uh area is this habitat connected to? And how can we improve local connections for wildlife? Next slide, please. Here's just a small handful of our wonderful native flora that could exist in one or more of these plant communities. And again, it's really driven by soils and hydrology also aspect, or which way does the slope face? A slope that faces east has plants that are gonna. Uh, want somewhat different conditions than one that's facing west and so on. So, uh, it's really, as Jessica said, it's a process of assessing. Uh, the habitat conditions, what can be supported there? And this in, at Sepulveda Basin will include not only open space areas. But also prioritizing the use of native plants in landscape areas and more in the built environment. Should really extend those habitat values throughout the park to create a kind of seamless transition or interplay. Between the natural environment and the built environment. Next slide. I think the most interesting thing to me uh about all of this is I've become involved with this project and. Several other projects I've, I've worked on is really providing that nature experience, especially for underserved communities. There are wonderful opportunities, as you're already presenting at the basin, to school groups and so on. Um, there are wonderful opportunities. Uh, to build on that, to provide even more amenities for. School groups and other groups to get up close and personal with nature. And this could include uh. The design of a new campus or constellation of buildings. Um, that are sensitively designed and, and situated. To really provide outdoor and indoor classrooms. Um, to support natural sciences education um for people of all ages. And going back to what Jessica said. Um, as well as some of you earlier, really, this is a community-guided and community-involved process. We've already learned so much from all of you about your resources. And the idea that the community would be involved in the restoration. And have those important opportunities to return to these areas and see that work that they've done, as you've done. Planting a tree, restoring a patch of wildflowers, and being able to come back and have the reward. Of seeing that develop over time. That's just so important. Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Richard. Um, so we've started a list of some inventory of what we think we've heard. And um, obviously from our own site observation as well. I think. Richard and myself and some of our team members have been out there many a different times with different groups at this point, and it's been, been lovely. Um, but some of the enhancements that specifically uh we'd want to associate with the Wildlife Reserve. Um, we've heard a lot about safety and rule enforcement. Um, that includes everything from um actually enforcing some of the permit items um to parking. Um, some issues with overnight parking that are happening. Um, we have a clear desire for increased River Ranger presence. Um, we know that uh they work out of Hanson and. There really is not a permanent uh, uh ranger um assigned to Sepulveda Basin. And so they, as of it is now, they sort of get over there when they can. Um, and they have, they have shared that with us. Um, but there's a desire for expanding that staffing. Um, and an increase in signage. Um, you all already have um some of the members of Audubon that are working towards some enhancements. And improvements of the signage out there already. Um, we see that there is additional uh opportunities to support um signage or to um. Uh, fix things that have been um just faded over time, et cetera. Uh, we've heard a lot of discussion about mobility and access as well. Um, it's, uh, you all probably know that. Um, last uh fall, one of the viewing platforms caved into the lake. That still has not been fixed. So. Some of that basic maintenance needs to be a first step to anything that would happen at the Wildlife Reserve, we believe. Um, it, there could be additional viewing areas. Of course, those would need to be um worked through in a um process, uh, design process. Um, potentially a better, more amenities for restings, more benches. Um, improved connections to the rest of the base. And this is something we've heard a lot. If you're at the Wildlife Reserve and you want to take a walk along the river, you have to duck like six fences and. You know, like kind of weasel your way into along some of those paths, but really thinking about that connectivity. Uh, we've heard a lot about the improved pathways uh needed across the basin. But I want to just point out that it's very important to designate which path is which, for which user group, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a second. For example, we know dogs are a real issue at the um Wildlife Reserve as well as bikes. And so those aren't paths that are really intended for that type of use. Uh, but there should be other paths for bikes or dogs so that they're not um, you know, finding themselves using, say, the Wildlife Reserve path. Um, we've heard a lot just about general maintenance and repairs relative to erosion. Um, the ongoing invasive and non-native species control. A lot of volunteer groups are out there doing hand-over-hand weeding. Um, on a weekly basis to help keep the area, some areas in check. Um, we know that when a flood happens, it spreads a lot of weed seed um from other areas of the basin. So. The Wildlife Reserve ability to maintain a sort of weed-free environment also depends on the neighboring areas of the basin. And so that uh is something that needs a lot of focus. Um, just general resurfacing, uh habitat re- um restoration, fixing broken fences, um better. Uh, management of the lake water. Uh, we know a lot of people, unfortunately. Uh, when they're done with their fish tank or their little turtle got bigger than they thought it should be, they bring it out and they put it in the lake and the lake is just has all sorts of things in it. Um, which is not great uh for the Wildlife Reserve, um, and in terms of what's happening in there. And then I mentioned wayfinding signage and environmental graphics. Um, we need a more uniform place names around the basin in general, uh, but also around, around the reserve. Um, accessibility of signage. Uh, there's not a lot out there if you're visually um impaired or if you're hard of hearing. Um, it's, it's, there's, it's really a singular experience right now. And so how can that be broadened? Um, and we're talking a lot about that, not only through um, through the visual or through audio. Um, but languages are important. We're talking also with the Tatavium and the Tangva about some of the indigenous place names. Uh, that, that they might choose to associate with places in the basin in the future as well. Um, need a little bit better visibility of the regulatory signage. You have to really kind of look for it. It's only in one or two places. Um, and, and improving that uh would be helpful. I mentioned we're doing a lot of conversations right now with different agencies in the city. Um, talking about what are some of the options for workforce development around option, operations and maintenance? We're also doing a lot of conversations around endowments. Um, as well as conservancies that could be set up to perpetually fund uh over the long term. Uh, more detailed operations and maintenance for areas of the basin that need, need that extra layer of care. Um, that perhaps the general uh wreck and parks budget currently uh cannot afford. Um, so that's one of the things that we're currently digging pretty deep into. Um, and we're talking a lot about mobility and access. So um, there are some trails, as you know, around the area of the Wildlife Reserve. We're looking at how those link to the larger systems. And which trails are, are really footpaths, which are community trails. Um, which are loop trails and which are some of these larger system trails that might be for bikes. So I'm not going to dwell on this because I want to save us the next last fifteen minutes or twenty minutes tonight, or even longer for discussion. Um, but when the plan comes out, what we're planning to include is for each different type. Of path in the basin, whether it's along a road. Or along um the Wildlife Reserve or some of the larger systems. To actually designate the type of cross-section. Like, is this just for people? Is this for people and bikes? Is this for, for dogs? Is this for um other sorts of mobility? To really help clarify that. And then through the signage system around the basin, uh, make this much more evident than it is today. Um, so we're talking about could we have uh the different community trails or loop trails? Each signed, have a mile marker, have a Q R code system. I know some of the work that Rick's doing, um, really how we can. Up the use of Q R codes to help provide additional information on some of our signage in the basin. Um, and we're, we're currently sort of theming each of these around native species of the basin. Uh, which could be really kind of a fun way uh to think about this. But how could this over um the coming years be greatly improved? Um, we're also looking at all of the regulation signing around signage around the basin. This is the first step in what would be a more detailed. Um, work, but I think as Pat said the other day, some of this stuff doesn't cost a lot of money. And what can be done now and in the first phases of projects to really make significant changes. Um, and improvements for wayfinding and address system, um, some of the just newer versions of signage. Um, I'll leave it at that with this beautiful picture of the Wildlife Reserve. I know there's probably. A million other things that Richard and I could share, but I've also been talking for forty-one minutes. So I'm gonna stop here. And um, we can, we can take some questions if that makes sense, um, Joanne, and uh have a discussion.
We normally have people put questions in the chat, but um, if you could stop sharing, we could.
Work.
Maybe, maybe people can um, you know, raise their hand or, or ask questions, you know, if there's some questions people. Would like to ask about what you talked about.
Yeah, people can use the raise your hand feature at the under uh reactions.
There we go. Stop, share. Okay, there we got it. Uh, there are a couple of questions here. Um, so I could, I could read them and then we can start there while other people think. Um, I don't live there, but I'm an avid birder who has recently relocated to Oregon from Arizona. I frequent a large city park here, Minto, Brown Island, and Salem. There are many ways the city has used to incorporate some of your suggestions and observations. I hope the best. Thank you, Cynthia. That's. Really great to hear that things are uh going there. Um, are you considering a weir upstream to capture trash before it gets into the basin? Yes, I'm so glad you asked this, Glenn. So much stuff uh just gets in there and um. I don't know, Mark Hannah, you were on before. I don't know if you still are, but um, we're talking about uh trash. Like booms that could be on the tributaries of the basin. So before water even, before trash even gets into the basin, each of those tributaries could um, could catch trash. Um, and then it'd be removed before it gets there. So we were looking at trash booms. We're also looking at C D S. Uh, units, which is a stormwater. Uh, uh, contraption uh that could be located upstream on the um tributaries. The other thing that is worth mentioning, but obviously will take more years to develop. The Enhanced Watershed Management Plans. So um, the region has uh for each of the sort of watershed areas. The Enhanced Watershed Management uh Strategies are looking at water quality and trash. So. Ideally, in a decade or two, that when those plans are more in place, the amount of trash coming downstream is greatly reduced. But as we all know, today, there is a major issue, especially during high flows of trash getting into the basin. So. Trash booms um would be in that early Phase one point one implementation, Glenn. Where we do the trash removal and slash and, and a removal and then install the trash catchers.
Richard, Richard has his hand up. Uh, Richard, do you want to ask her a question? Richard has his hand up. Do you want to ask her a question?
Please, thank you.
Put it in the chat, Richard, I'm sorry. Yeah, he's in Bangkok.
Okay, maybe he can type it in. I will read, Cynthia also typed using a weir to percolate water into the aquifer. And I, I didn't show it tonight, but many of you might know that the lobe on the north slash northwest of the basin, sort of the area around. Bull Creek and then the area that a lot of us lovingly call the back forty. On the west side of Balboa, those are some of the highest areas of infiltration into the shallow groundwater basin. And so the idea of using a weir. Along, whether it's Bull Creek or one of the other inflows from that north edge. To spread water into like, to shallow basins. And that area that then can percolate water into the aquifer is something we are looking at and Cynthia, I'm really glad you, you drew attention. To that. Rick, were you able, he's still typing, we'll wait for him.
Question, you know, Richard brought up, the, the other Richard, he brought up the fact that. You know, he showed like a diagram with like seven or eight different ecosystems, you know. Chaparral, et cetera. Do you guys have an idea, are you gonna do different areas, different environments or how is that gonna work? I know you have. You're thinking about the riparian, but I was wondering if there's other, I mean, what you were thinking about.
Jessica, shall I go ahead?
Go for it.
Sure, well. Jessica showed that slide earlier, that rendering of the whole floodplain. Are you able to pull that up, Jessica?
Yes, I will do so.
That'd be really helpful.
Let me see if I can find the right one.
Sort of looking downstream towards the dam.
Downstream towards the dam.
That's the one. Oh, super. One of the things. That's really exciting about this project is that by widening the river. And laying back some of the slopes more gradually. And also facilitating the creation of terrace areas. Along the banks, you end up with a lot more diversity. Of hydrology and some of the stream processes. They give you the ability to create. What we call transitional habitats. So you've got the wet stuff like marsh. And willows that like to have their feet in the water. And then you have the stuff that prefers. Or can, can't tolerate that much water. That would be on the upper slopes and up on the uppermost terrace. Things like coastal sage scrub or some of our types of native grassland. But in between, what's kind of missing out there in portions of the basin right now are those valuable transitional habitats. I'm sure many of you know what mule fat is and sycamore woodland. And there's also a really interesting habitat that's increasingly rare in our region called alluvial scrub. That arises in areas that have infrequent scouring by water. By diversifying the topography within the floodplain. You end up with the opportunity to create all kinds of different habitats that follow what you could call that. Hydrologic gradient from dry to moist. And they'll establish in different bands along these watercourses, not only the LA River. But also each of the tributaries. According to their preferences for water, what amount of scour and so on they can withstand. And this is great for wildlife because we know that Virio, although they're typically associated with riparian habitat. Your birders will know, they often will leave the riparian habitat and to other types of habitat to forage. And they go back and forth, the same with upland oriented species. Happily go down and forage in the wetlands as well, and the more diversity you have, the more of a habitat mosaic, as we say. Overall, the resources are vastly improved for a wide range of wildlife species. So to answer your question, Joanne, it really is a matter of. Capturing all those different new diverse opportunities, slope and aspect and how the water is moving. And that really determines what kind of plants and seeds you want to put in a certain. That will have the best chance of thriving in those specific conditions.
Thank you. We, we got, thank you so much. We got some more chat, let's see.
Yeah, let me, let me try this one there. Are there future Olympic facilities going to be built in Sepulveda Basin? Let's start with that one. So many of you, and I'll stop sharing for a second. Many of you might be familiar that in the Olympic bid for the twenty twenty-eight Olympics. LA twenty twenty-eight did show Sepulveda Basin as a potential site for some sports. They are waiting on the final list from the IOC of which games will be part of the twenty twenty-eight Olympics. They expect to have that at the end of October. What we do know from them is they are not, they're not looking at any areas around the Wildlife Reserve or the river. If they were to have an event at Sepulveda Basin, they're looking at the north edge. Of the basin, particularly in close proximity to the Bus Rapid Transit stops of the Orange Line. At Balboa and Woodley. And also it's worth noting that this is not a no build Olympics, so they're not building like stadiums. The, the, the whole pitch that was made to the Olympic Committee, the International Olympic Committee. Was to not, to use facilities that LA has, like the Coliseum, like SoFi. And so the, if, if something were to be held in the basin, it would be one of the smaller scale events. Not like a stadiums type thing. Again, we, they're, they're keeping us posted, they're hoping to have their list by October. And they're looking to follow the guidance of this plan, if something were to be appropriate at that north edge of the basin. That was a great question, and then there were two more in there. One was about golf and one was about cricket. So last year in Sepulveda Basin, about two hundred and fifty thousand rounds of golf were played. So it is a pretty popular golf course. And one of the things is it's one of the most affordable courses because it's a public course. It hosts a lot of youth programs for the city of LA, golf programs for youth. And a lot of senior programs, actually. So what we're trying to do is how do we balance the fact that this is a heavily used facility for recreation? With a lot of the ecology goals. And so we're looking at what the actual area of play is for golf, so the overall acreage, but we're looking at specifically. How many of those acres are really devoted to recreation versus how many are interstitial spaces? And in those interstitial spaces, especially reducing the amount of, of lawn, of turf that needs to be irrigated and instead. Replacing that with habitat area, potentially drainage channels that can hold more stormwater when it rains. Creating more rain gardens, more pollinator habitat, et cetera. So, so we certainly are taking a really deep dive with golf to. Reduce its impact of, in terms of on its ecological impact. While also still maintaining those programs for community members that otherwise might, might not be able to afford. That recreation. In terms of cricket, the cricket grounds actually in Sepulveda Basin are the largest set of cricket grounds. In the region, they're really heavily used. We're not expanding that heavily, but we are suggesting that they, they remain. They've had a project on the books for many, many years with the Department of Wreck and Parks. To make some improvements around the cricket grounds. They also do a lot of their own maintenance to maintain the grounds at the cricket fields. So that that doesn't financially come out of the wreck and parks main budget. So we're trying, we're not expanding golf. We're just trying to more or less still allow the same number of players to participate. While changing sort of the, the ecological. Carla also asked, are we trying to do too much? So I want to be super, I really appreciate that question. I'm glad you asked it, Carla. The vision plan, if we were to do everything that is currently shown, I think many of you realize this is, this is decades of work. And this is probably billions in the B billions of dollars. We'll have a cost estimate in a few weeks. So I, I do want to be clear, this is not like in twenty twenty-seven, you're gonna show up to the basin and every single one of these projects we're talking about is being done. Part of the reason for this vision plan is the city is in the process of updating its long-term lease. For the basin, so the city leases about fifteen hundred acres. Of the two thousand acres for active recreation and for habitat areas. And part of that renegotiation, which that lease will renew in twenty thirty-five. Includes the city determining, do you want to lease more land? Do you want to do different programming in different areas? And so this comprehensive plan is really meant to look forward at what. What members of the community want to be able to do in the coming decade or decades. So that that, that lease can be negotiated so that projects and budgets can be set up. So I really appreciate that question because I, this is not like you snap your fingers and two thousand acres of the basin overnight looks very different. It's a great question. The weir at the south end of the Wildlife Lake needs some maintenance, that's true, we should add that to the list. Barbara? Let me see. Homelessness, so there are a number of folks that are experiencing homelessness. In the basin and using the basin for encampment. One of the biggest strategies around. I mean, I think many of you know that Mayor Bass is doing a lot of work around homelessness right now. We're working in parallel with those teams at the council district offices. It's, it's a very large issue and a lot of parks around the city. Increasing the park ranger program, increasing enforcement is going to be really critical to this. And increasing the operations and maintenance budgets. I'm not gonna lie, this is, it is one of the very challenging aspects of working in any park space in the LA region right now. The number of persons experiencing homelessness in our community is very high. There are some efforts in some of the neighborhoods surrounding to increase affordable housing and increase temporary supportive and. Temporary supportive housing and like shelter housing. And I know that's a big initiative of Mayor Bass. I, I, it's one of those things where it's always never as fast as you'd like it to be, but. But it is a, a parallel process, we're working very closely and the goal would be to increase. Services, increase outreach to folks in the basin through the coordinated outreach system that the city and the county have. Help folks get into housing. And then to enforce the no encampment policies in the basin specifically. Richard, you got your comment in the thing here, so you're discussing major earth movements and setting up better flood control. So that's a great point. One thing to say to everybody is we don't imagine the grading of the Wildlife Reserve. And the lake that's there to change, to change really at all because there's so much already quality habitat. Intact that we wouldn't want to disturb, so that is sort of what Richard was describing on the end of the spectrum where it's very nuanced. Now in an area, say, like the West Reserve where we have a ton of mustard. It might be more of approach where Richard was describing where removing. A lot of that understory, keeping a lot of the, the large canopy trees, especially the native canopy trees. And really taking a strategy of, of regrading, getting a lot of that weed seed out, clearing the soil and replanting. If we, in terms of the river de-channelization. That is a major regrading in some of the areas along the river to give the river more space. And there's a couple of things we've been looking at really closely there. One is maintaining as much of the existing tree canopy as we can. So there are a lot of really good willows and sycamores in areas along the river. And so the potential to almost grade like islands, like sandbar islands into that larger river cross-section. Is something that as, as this project would move into detailed design would be really important. And it would also be really important to look to see how much, how much tree canopy can be maintained in the basin. Richard has, I'm gonna turn it over to Richard because he's also had an incredible amount of success in projects. Where significant grading did require a sort of different approaches to how trees and other things could be handled. Richard, do you want to speak to some of those unique grading experiences?
Oh, sure. Another project that we worked on was OC Public Works. Involved creating a vital linkage between the NCCP areas inland. And the coastal reserve in Orange County. And we created through fairly massive grading. A new four hundred foot wide corridor. A good distance that created a connection between Borregor Canyon Wash. And the Great Park Wildlife Corridor that had not yet been developed and is now in place. And this is meant to allow wildlife. Including large predators, large mammals to be able to move. Between the Santa Ana Mountains and the coastal reserves. And to do this, we started with a strawberry field at grade. And through a process with the federal and state and local agencies. Extensive grading was performed to cut a deep channel. A few hundred feet wide. And I can tell you that immediately after grading. That section of the river did not have a lot of natural or aesthetic value. But very quickly, with appropriate planting and seeding and proper maintenance. Native vegetation be able to come in so that even several months later after grading, there was significant greening. And now that corridor is very lush. In fact, it has better natural and ecological value than the pre-existing sections. Of those drainages extending up and downstream. And that site has also been occupied. By multiple pair of successfully nesting these spells Virio, coastal California night catcher. And the coastal cactus rim. And so. Even areas that have received some fairly intensive earthworks with good science, good creativity. Can be transformed quite readily into highly functional habitat that's also nice to look at.
Yeah, thanks, Richard. And yeah, if you have any follow-ups on that. Rick, feel free to put them back in the chat, we can talk more about it. I, I wanted to mention that when we had shown some of the, the early things back in June, many of you will remember that. The different schemes that we showed had different amounts of cut and fill. And one of the exercises that we're working on really hard as a team right now is how much we can balance that, right? Because. Cutting ground to be able to make additional capacity, that soil has to go somewhere. So it's a big effort right now to figure out how much of it can, can be reused or relocated in the basin. So we don't have as much export that would need to be taken out of, of, of the basin. That's what my team gets to do over the next three weeks. Glenn mentioned there's an experimental system on Biona Creek, totally right, there's a, there's a couple of different things that are being done. There as well as in Long Beach, we can also, one of the things on Biona is actually the, the interceptor. And, and so figuring out what the right scale is for some of these creeks in the basin is, is a big important piece of that. But as Pat noted, unfortunately, a lot of the trash are things that are being hauled into the river and creek bottoms. Unfortunately, very intentionally, we know and we have seen, and we, there are kind of. Proof of people bringing whatever they're done with at home and just dropping it off in the basin. And so that's an enforcement issue, more rangers are definitely needed to reduce. That sort of illegal dumping, the, the basin becomes just a two thousand acre place where people cannot be seen leaving stuff. We end up with everything from building materials to turtles to shopping carts out there. Kathy asked about funding, so right now, everything that I, we have been talking about tonight is unfunded. Which is. Um, which is uh, um, why we're working towards building the community consensus plan. Um, it's really important to get that because uh political leaders uh will then um be advocating four dollars for this project. And so I'm sure many of you noticed that intentionally we are trying to not say, set the people that love birds against people that love transportation and access. Um, because that's sort of debate or, or quote unquote uh argument um, reduces consensus, which then becomes a hindrance to funding. And so um, we're really hoping that as we head towards October, um, when we get to a draft plan, that we can have a lot of enthusiasm around it and then advocate. Um, there's some really, one of the big efforts that the team is um working on and Estelano Advisors is leading is a funding initiatives, a strategy around this. And so they've put together an entire both grant as well as city, uh, county, state and federal funding menu of different strategies to approach with this, things attached to the climate bond and the infrastructure bond, um, infrastructure LA, other pieces like that, as well as grants associated with um, nature-based strategies and access. Many of you know that Senator Stern has been a big supporter. I'll just mention, um, he's working really hard at the state level to allocate funding towards the basin, um, things like that. We're working really closely with, um, of course, the mayor's office and the county um, and the state, uh, the MRCA and the SNC. So not funded now, uh, that's one of the reasons why uh, when we, the sooner we get to October and we get that community consensus of where we want to head, um, the better. Um, uh, yeah, there's a point here from Bill. So Department of Wreck and Parks does not permit uh herbicide use, um, especially um, uh, glyphosate based, um, herbicides have not been allowed for what, four years, four years now? Yeah, Bill has it in here since two thousand nineteen. Um, we do recognize that that makes the removal of certain species uh very difficult in the basin. Um, we've had some discussions about that. And Richard, I don't know if you want to uh pop in here at this point. Um, we, we are aware of that. We, we do know it makes the removal of some invasives very difficult. And we've had some conversations about it. We also know, uh, there have been some proposals for other things that naturally help with weed control like goats um in the basin. And so, Richard, I don't know, please pop in and provide Richard Lewis more intelligence than I'm saying.
Oh, well, um, you know, herbicides is an admittedly complex issue. Some of you would be aware that some municipalities like the city of Irvine have a fairly aggressive policy concerning the use of synthetic herbicides. Um, and you know, it's a sensitive issue for sure. And um, I will tell you that on the Lower Arroyo Seco site that I showed you a slide initially where we converted those fields of reeds to um, fields of flowers. Um, that's really a hand reading effort. Um, but it's on a fairly limited scale in terms of acres. When you start talking about restoration on a larger scale, it becomes more challenging to conduct read suppression solely by hand. There are ways to do it. Um, but it's very laborious. We have experimented with some of the so-called organic or non-synthetic herbicides. And we have found some of them to be effective. I can tell you that some of those can be very expensive. And they have some of their own hazards for the applicators. And they do have some effects on soil fertility. And there are other issues. They're not necessarily a perfect replacement for the synthetic chemicals. But I don't think either Jessica or myself uh would want to speak in detail on behalf of the city, especially going forward into an uncertain, uncertain future. Um, what the city's position and policies would be on the use of some of these herbicides. I think that will emerge during the more detailed restoration planning phase for these projects. Not only for those areas that are what I would call voluntary restoration. But also importantly, there are substantial areas of the basin that could provide habitat mitigation. Not only for some of the temporal impacts for the resources also present, but also potential offsite mitigation for other projects in the region. Any of those kinds of projects would involve robust permitting process with the full range of natural resource agencies, the development of detailed restoration plans. And also referencing city ordinances, manufacturer specifications. Everything will come to bear on how those detailed plans come together, including public outreach. So uh, we have used herbicides in the past. Um, you know, it's a long-going conversation. Um, I think Jessica, would you say that is the best position we can provide at this point?
Um, yeah, I thought that was like a little mini um seminar. That was really helpful, Richard. Um, yeah, I think it'll be an ongoing dialogue, uh, especially um, uh, along, along the basin, especially with some of the planning efforts. Um, M asks if horse trails are part of the plan? So currently in the alternatives, we did show um horse trails and a educational equestrian center. Um, we're asking for feedback on that in the survey, if that's something that people uh liked. One of the, there are two or three things we need to balance with that. Um, one is, um, we need to make sure that uh, any sort of uses, uh, say like a horse trail, the separation of that use from some of the active recreation is really important. Uh, the separation of that from some of the more uh precious ecosystems is important. Um, so there are considerations there. Um, horses historically, uh, back in the day, there were trails in the basin and people would ride in the basin. Um, that has not been the case for, I can't remember the exact year that horse trails were taken out of the basin, um, but it has been part of the conversation. Certainly, um, please answer that survey question. It's probably one of the most split issues right now uh that we're seeing from folks. Um, some people are like, yes, 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 horses. Some people are like, no, 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 horses. Uh, so you know, feel free to put your thoughts in the chat or uh we'll send the survey a link around. Um, Pat asked about artificial turf sports fields. Um, right now, we're not showing any in the alternatives. I think, you know, as detailed design uh starts, obviously, you know, if, if one of the soccer fields is going to be more of a championship level or something, I guess that would become part of the discussion. Um, but, but it's not currently shown. We're assuming that everything is a natural turf where we're showing fields. Um, uh, oh, there's a long one here. Okay. There has been a major restoration of wetlands around Goleta, California to restore land that has been co-opted for a misadventure with a golf course. This includes a specific restoration of a native plant landscape appropriate to the area and sensitive in particular to the timing of growth stages. All this was overseen as a major program at UC Santa Barbara. I was wondering if the Santa Barbara program might serve as a model for the vision plan. Um, yeah, that's a great precedent. We would love to uh get some more information on that. Um, uh, I'm not as familiar with that project. I don't know, Richard, if you are, but maybe, Richard, we could um just get some information, follow up with you about, about more on that. That would be helpful. Um, Muriel said, and I, again, Joanne, I don't know how that you guys normally go, Richard and I probably talk all night, but we could take a few more. What do you say?
We normally it uh ended like right about now, but if, I don't know what to say. Uh, I know that there's still like thirty-six people on the call, so if someone has a burning question, uh, maybe we could take one or two more.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, I'll just, there was one questions here um, about the Habitat and Trails of the Wild Lurf Reserve East Field. That's a great point. We didn't talk a lot about that tonight, Muriel, but I'm glad you mentioned it. That's actually something also that the Resource Conservation District has been looking a lot at. And we have been coordinating with them. And so uh that east field is also a place that could use um improvements. So yes. And thank you. Um.
I have a question. Um, when is the next workshop or how can people find out about if they are interested in following up on what you talked about tonight?
So glad you asked. Uh, the next in-person um community meeting is going to be October seventeenth. It is a Tuesday. It will be at six PM at the Encino Community Center. It's a Tuesday night. Um, and that's where we'll be able to show uh the, the, the full survey results as well as uh what we think could be a, the community-based uh draft uh plan. Um, a week before that, we're going to have a workshop uh to reveal that and have a more in-depth conversation for folks that are members of, of groups. I I think that date I will look is October eleventh. So some of you have come to those morning workshops. Right now, we're planning on doing a virtual workshop the morning of October eleventh at ten thirty AM. That'll be a little bit more in-depth of a presentation. If you've been to the public presentations, they're usually designed to be high-level for all different levels of interest groups. Um, but the workshop presentations are usually longer and go into more detail. And that's scheduled virtually for ten thirty on the eleventh of October. Um, yeah.
Is that open to the public or is that only by invitation or?
We're not turning people away. Um, it's by invitation of um community groups. So San Fernando Audubon will certainly get an invite to that. We'd love to have, you know, a couple, at least two or three members come. I guess if you send like eighty members to the workshop, uh, it, it might feel uh lopsided from the other uh stakeholder groups, but I don't think we would turn you away. Um, but yeah, we would love to have members of San Fernando uh Valley Audubon come to that on October eleventh. Um, we just set all these dates, um, literally about five hours ago in a meeting with the city. So you'll start to see the announcement emails come out probably over the next couple of weeks. Um. Anything else? I'm just checking to see if there were anything um else in here. There, if, there might be a few messages that I've missed. Sorry, all I've been trying to read them all, but if there's something that you didn't get answered, feel free to email me. I'll put my email in the chat. Um, or if you send it through Muriel or Pat or um Joanne, I'm sure they will uh get it our way if we've missed anything. I'm sure there are some of these messages that in my, my uh brain I have overlooked and I apologize for that.
Yeah, we'll get your email address and then uh refer that to people.
Great. And if you, uh, many of you have probably been to the website, but the city uh Department of Bureau of Engineering is keeping a website uh with materials for meetings, et cetera. And that's where you can access the survey. If you haven't already taken it, uh, please do. It takes probably ten minutes. It, you know, you can spend as long as you want on it, but if you just go straight through it, it probably takes about ten minutes and we'd love to uh make sure that we, we get your feedback in there.
So would they just go to Sepulveda Vision Plan? Is that what?
Um, yep, exactly. Yep, that link. So it's HTTPS colon slash slash. I just put it in the chat. I'll put it in there one more time. Um, if you click on that, actually, why don't I just, this is the beauty of sitting at our computer. Why don't I show you? Um, this is the website. So if you click that link that I just put in the chat, you'll go to the City Bureau of Engineering website. And um, it'll talk about uh the different materials that are available. And I've been referencing a lot tonight, Vision Plan Survey number two. And it says, you know, we would like your input. And you can click this link and it will take you to the Sepulveda Basin Vision Plan Survey. Uh, you can also take it in Spanish. Um, it has some imagery in it. And then pretty easy to say, you know, like, I like it, no opinion, I'm opposed. Uh, and it goes through a series of, of, I guess, let's see how many questions total. Uh, thirty-three, thirty-four questions. Um, you can provide your name if you want to be on the email list, um, but you don't have to. Um, and uh, yeah.
Well, thank you so much. You, you both spent a lot of time with us, Jessica and Richard, and we really appreciate it. And a lot of people hung on and got all the information and we're looking forward to working with you more. Thank you for sharing everything tonight.
Thank you all so much for the time and um it goes both ways. This is really the group that has shepherded and steward the basin for so many decades. And so we're, we're honored to be able to work on this with you and for you. So thanks so much.
All right.
A real pleasure to join you. Thank you.
See you at the workshop.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you again. That was uh tremendously helpful, I think, for our um, for our members and, and followers. We really appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah.
Glad to be here. Thanks, Kathy and everyone.
And we'll have the YouTube of the video up on the website uh in a day or so. Along and we'll have the chat available.
And, and before I lose you all, uh, I'm just here for a plug for our next general meeting, September twenty-eighth at five PM. Um, which is early time for us because we're having Rosemary Moscow, um, famous author who's going to be talking to us about her newest book, Guide to Pigeon Watching. It's uh quite entertaining. She's charming and talented. So please join us then.
Then.
Bye all and thank you for coming.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye.